We are delighted to welcome you all to session nine of day four in our ongoing faculty development program. It is indeed an honor to have it another accomplished speaker joyous for this session. So, begin the proceedings, I now invite Mister Kane Anmaren and me to deliver the welcome address. And offer a brief introduction of our distinguished chief guest.
Good morning, ma'am. It's my pleasure to welcome you all to this event. We are honored to have the first Dr. S. Vena, a distinguished academic with over twenty-two years of experience in the field of computer science and engineering. With a focus on machine learning data analytics, network security and human computer interaction. Dr. Vena earned her B and M Tech degree in computer science and engineering and went on to complete her PhD from Satibhama University in two thousand sixteen. She currently serves as a professor in the recruitment of computer science and business system CSBS at SRM Institute of Science and Technology Ramapuram, Sinai campus. In recognition of her academic contribution, Dr. Vena has authored multiple technical books and published numerous research publications. The two major journals and conferences include Senior and the Inner Science. She is also a recognized PhD supervisor at SRM, driving research scholar in cutting-edge domains. Her notable contributions include a patented IoT ghost human self-defense device. And the several applications in advanced technologies and platforms such as MPTL and Co-Reso. She has actively delivered lectures and workshops in academia in industry. Demonstrating her commitment to both research and teaching excellence. Please join me in warmly welcoming Dr. S. Vena, whose vast experience and dedication to technological advancement make her a true inspiration to all of us here at the PRT today. Thank you, ma'am.
With these words of welcome, we now invite our respected Chief Guest, Dr. S. Vena, to take over and lead us through this session. Great work to all participants to stay engaged and attentive as we move forward with this insightful presentation.
Can I share the screen ma'am? Hello. Very good morning to one and all present here. So, today we are going to see about the natural language processing in industry five point zero. So, I have planned to discuss the topics under NLP as these points like first one, I am going to cover the basic concepts of NLP. First, we are going to see the introduction to natural language processing followed by the different phases which we are going to use it in NLP. Then followed by the steps for natural language processing. And then followed by the frameworks and libraries that we are going to use it in natural language processing. Then followed by what are the popular methods which is mainly used in NLP. And the various tools that can be used in natural language processing. Followed by the applications of natural language processing and followed by advantages, disadvantages and future of NLP. So, before moving on to the industry five point zero topic, I just want to give you a brief overview of these basic concepts. And followed by the industry five point zero, I am going to just give an introduction about industry five point zero. And what is the difference between this four point zero and five point zero? And NLP how it is going to be used in industry five point zero? And what can we expect in the year two thousand twenty-five and about the NLP techniques in industry five point zero? Then the types of algorithms used, the top NLP algorithms and the key applications of NLP in industry five point zero. So, coming on to the natural language processing. So, what is natural language processing? It is defined as one of the branch of the artificial intelligence that provides the computers with the capability of understanding the text and the spoken words. The same way a human being can. So, you know very well how the human being can able to understand whatever the other person talks about. So, similarly, the natural language processing, we are going to use some AI techniques, train the computer in such a way. Whatever the human speak and whatever the human give it as a text format, even the machine can able to understand it and it is going to give it as a pure output. And it incorporates machine learning models. So, how it is going to do it is by using some techniques. So, it uses machine learning models, statistics, deep learning models into the computational linguistics. That is, the rule-based modeling of human language to allow the computers to understand the different types of formats like text, spoken words and understands the human language intent and sentiment. It's not that only English language can be used, it can be in any format, any language also. So, even that we are going to train the system to understand that and it is going to give the output accordingly. So, humans communicate with each other using words and the text. So, we all humans, we know that we communicate with each other only by speech and by using some text format. So, the way that humans convey some information to each other is called as a natural language. So, every day humans share a larger quantity of information that is quality of information with each other in various languages. As speech or in the text format. So, but these computers cannot understand these natural language what human uses. Okay, so hu- hu- computers cannot interpret this data which is in natural language as they can communicate only with zeros and ones. So, the data that this produces precious and can offer valuable insights. So, whatever the language, the text format or the speech that we are going to deliver it is going to be of precious data. So, that should not be wasted in any way. So, we are going to make the computers to be able to understand that type of text or speech. Emulate and respond intelligently to human speech. So, we are training the computers in such a way to understand whatever the text that is given by the humans. And then responded immediately or intelligently. Be relevant to the question, right? So, we are going to train the machine or computer in such a way to understand it properly. Respond intelligently to the human speech. So, this NLP refers to the branch of artificial intelligence that gives the machines the ability to read it, understand it and derive the meaning from the human language also. So, it may be of any type of language, English, German, Spanish or whatever. We are going to train the machine to understand that language and then give the reply accordingly. So, this is going to the difference between a natural language and the computer language with respect to these parameters like. So, one is ambiguous. Okay, so when I am talking about the ambiguous, the natural language, they are ambiguous in nature definitely. And computer language, they are designed to be unambiguous. So, this is one parameter where we are going to have a difference and redundancy. Natural languages employ lot of redundancy. You can see that when I talk in the form of paragraph, the paragraph may contain the words which is going to be of redundant form. And formal languages are less redundant. So, we are going to remove all the duplicate words and then only we are going to go for processing the words. So, the formal languages are less redundant. And literalness, literalness, which is nothing but the natural language are made up of idiom and metaphor. So, which is means able to understand it in a simple format or not. So, it has its own, each and every language has its own synthetic rules. That is, we call it as a grammar. So, each and every sentence should have follow the rules and rules of forming a sentence or forming a word and so on. So, this we call it as a simple. Natural languages are made up of idiom and metaphor. Okay, so how well you can understand that language by means of framing the rules that is we call it as a grammar. And formal languages mean exactly what they want to see. So, even this formal languages has a set of rules to be followed, syntax rules, semantic rules. So, they also follow the syntax and semantic rules so that the computer can able to understand as per the tool format and then able to interpret and then give the response accordingly. So, you can see that NLP is going to combine the different domains. So, it's not only a branch of NLP, the branch of AI, it's going to be a combination of computer science, AI and then human language. So, all put together is going to be the NLP. So, NLP combines the field of linguistics and computer science to decipher the language structure and guidelines and to meet the models which can comprehend breakdown and separate significant details from the text and speech. So, in order to understand the human language or natural language, the system should able to have the knowledge of different domains like the basic computer science or AI and the human language. That is the natural language, that is your English or Spanish or whatever this. So, coming on to the phases of natural language processing. So, these are the five phases we have in. First one is going to be the lexical analysis phases. So, coming on to the phases of natural language processing. First one is going to be the lexical analysis or we can also call it as morphological processing. Followed by the synthetic analysis, then semantic analysis, discourse integration, pragmatic analysis. So, we are going to see these phases one by one. So, phase one is your lexical analysis. The first phase is going to be the lexical analysis or also called as a morphological processing. In this phase, the sentences, paragraphs are broken into tokens. So, tokens we know that it is going to be the smallest unit of any kind of text. So, whenever the text or paragraph is being given, the paragraph is going to be separated into the sentences. The sentences are going to be separated into each and every individual words. So, these each and every individual words we call it as a token here. So, the sentences and paragraphs are broken into tokens. These tokens are the smallest unit of the text. It scans the entire source text and divides into meaningful lexemes. So, we are going to identify whether the each and every word is going to have a meaning or not. If it is not going to give any meaning, I am just going to remove it stage by stage. For example, the sentence he goes to college is going to be divided into he goes to college. So, the full sentence is going to be divided into four tokens or four, five tokens including this period that is the full stop. So, E is one token, goes to is another token, college is another token and daughter. That is a period is also considered as one of the tokens. So, totally this particular sentence is going to be divided into five tokens. So, there are five tokens in the sentence, a paragraph may also be divided into sentences like. Here, this is the paragraph which is given to us. Okay, so this paragraph is going to contain a three or four sentences. Now, we are going to divide this first paragraph into the sentence. So, this is what we call it as a sentence deduction. The first paragraph, the first sentence is a paragraph is a distinct section of writing covering one topic. A paragraph will usually contain, this is supposed to be the second sentence and the third and the fourth. So, likewise, first of all, we are going to divide the paragraph into sentences. Then from the sentence, we are going to divide into various tokens. We are going to extract the tokens. The second phase is going to be the synthetic analysis or also called as parsing. So, here in this phase, the sentence is checked whether it is well formed or not. Whether it has a proper send syntax or not. So, the word arrangement is studied and a synthetic relationship is found between them. It is checked for the word arrangement and the grammar. So, the main function of this synthetic analysis is checking for the word arrangement as well as for the grammar. For example, the sentence Delhi goes to him. Even though it makes a sentence, but it is not at all going to be a proper format, the word arrangement is totally wrong. So, this type of sentence is going to be rejected by the synthetic parser. So, by the way itself, we can say that Delhi cannot goes to him, that is not completely wrong. Okay, so this we can say that any person can go to Delhi, but no one can go to that particular person. Okay, so the place cannot go to him. So, likewise, this is one type of parsing where we are going to identify whether the word arrangement in the sentence is correct or not. Next one is the semantic analysis. So, this phase is going to check for the literal meaning of each and every word and the arrangement together. So, you can see the synthetic and semantic analyzer goes work together. Okay, it is going to be integrated with each other where it is going to check for the syntax as. It is also going for, going to check for the meaning of a sentence. So, here you can see the sentence, I hate hot ice cream. So, here you can see that I ate hot ice cream, it's a correct sentence. But when I talk about the meaning of the sentence, the ice cream cannot be hot. So, since the ice cream cannot be hot, this particular sentence will be rejected by the semantic analyzer because it doesn't make sense. Another example is colorless green idea. So, when I say colorless, of course, no color should be there in the particular sentence. So, the meaning is the particular word arrangement of these two words is irrelevant to each other. So, when I say colorless, there should not be any other color which has to be there in the sentence. So, even this kind of sentence would be rejected by the semantic analyzer or analyzer. Where the colorless here and green does not make any sense here. Okay, so this is how we are going to check for the synthetic as well as semantic analysis. Next one is going to be the discourse integration. So, what is this discourse integration is, we are going to check if I have one sentence, okay, whether that. Is going to be taken from the previous sentence or whether it is going to affect the future sentence. That is what means the discourse integration. So, here the. Before a particular. And the effect of the current sentence on the upcoming sentences determined. So, the impact of the sentence before a particular sentence. So, see for example, he wanted that. So, that I should have represented about that particular word before. That refers to what I should have mentioned it in the previous sentence. And it also depends upon the previous discourse context, okay? That refers to what? So, in which context that is going to be defined and I should have, I would have defined it in the previous sentence only then. In the current sentence, I can easily say that he wanted that. And also E, E refers to what? E means who is that person I should have. Particular person in the previous sentence, only then I can able to say he wanted that. So, when I am going to define one sentence, it would be related to the previous sentence. And whatever the word that I am going to use it in the current sentence, that will also be helpful in my future sentence. This is what we call it as a discourse integration. So, I cannot say each and every sentence is independent of each other. The sentence, the current. Depends on the previous sentence as well as the current sentence will have an impact on the future sentence also. So, the next phase is pragmatic analysis. So, the last phase of the natural language processing is pragmatic analysis. Here, sometimes the discourse integration phase and pragmatic analysis are going to be combined. Like say for example, whenever the statement or the sentence has been given, I am going to analyze what is that form of that particular sentence. The actual effect of the text is covered by applying the set of rules that characterize about the cooperative dialogues. What is the type of dialogue? See for example, close the window, can I put a question mark here? Is it correct? So, I will be analyzing that the NLP will be analyzing whether the statement is going to be ended with the correct special character. Whether it is going to be a quotes or whether it's going to be exclamatory mark, whether it is going to be a question mark, whether it is going to be a order, whether it is going to be, what is the form of the sentence is going to be identified in this pragmatic analysis. So, close the window, it should be interpreted as a request instead of an order. So, close the window, I am just going to request, give a request to another person saying, asking him to close the window. So, this is one type of request. So, what is the form of the sentence is going to be identified by the NLP. Okay, so this is going to be done in the pragmatic analysis. So, before that we have seen about the different phases of the NLP that is there are five phases. These are the five phases normally we use it for any kind of processing the language. These are the five phases normally we use it for any kind of processing the language, natural languages. Next moving on to the steps for the natural language processing. Okay, so step by step we need to process it, right? We need to identify. So first one is going to be the segmentation. Second step is going to be the tokenization, removing stop words, then stemming, lematization, part of speech tagging. We also call it as a short form is POS and named entity tagging. Okay, so these are the several steps that we perform in the natural language processing. So first step is segmentation. So whenever any kind of document is being given, you are going to divide the document or a paragraph into sentences. So this is what we call it as a segmentation. So first you need to break the entire document down into constituent sentences. Then you can do this by segmenting the article along with this punctuation like full stop and comma. So how do you divide into sentences and how do you divide it into words? Is by using the punctuations or full stops or commas. Okay, like for example, the sky is clear, the stars are twinkling at night. This is one sentence, but how can I segment it? By using a comma, so here I have a comma, so I can segment into two types of sentences here itself. One is the sky is clear, since I have a comma, you start segmenting into the second sentences. The stars are twinkling at night. Okay, so this is one example of segmenting a sentence into two sub-substances, two sub-sentences. Next one is tokenization. For the algorithm to understand these sentences, you need to get the words in a sentence and explain them individually to our algorithm. So once I have a sentence, okay, the smallest sentence. Then I have to understand the meaning of each and every word. For that I have to divide that sentence into individual words. Okay, so this is what we call it as a tokenization. So you break down your sentence into its constituent words and store them. This is called as tokenization and each and every word is called as a token. So here the star are twinkling at night, the stars are twinkling at night. Since I don't have a full stop here, that even if I don't have a full stop, you don't have to consider that as a token. If I have a full stop, that full stop also is going to be considered as a token. In the sentence, I don't have a full stop. So these are the six tokens I am going to generate it from this particular sentence. Step three is removing the stop words. Okay, so what is the stop words like? We have was, in, is and the these are for us as stop words. Because why I am going to remove the stop words is this is not going to give me any meaning while I am going to process the natural language. That is English or whatever the language that I am going to process it. Okay, so I am going to remove the stop words. So you can make the learning process faster because if I have more number of words, it takes more time for me to process it. So I am going to remove all the unwanted words, that is the stop words like was, in, is, the. These are going to be the words which are not going to be helpful for me to. Non-essential words which gives little meaning to the statement and I just make a state, statement sound more cohesive. Okay, it is just going to tell you about whether it is going to, the particular statement is going to be a past or future or present. But anyway, it's not going to be helpful for me to process it for the natural language. So next one is step four is going to be a setting. It is a process of obtaining the words. The word stem gives new words upon adding affixes to them. What is the word stem? Skip, say when I say skip is one of the word stem, it means I can add some affixes to words. It means skipper, skipper. So these are the affixes I can add it to them to make this word as a word stem. Okay, so likewise in my sentences, okay, I may having, I may be having a lot of words like this. So I need to generate to the particular, I need to find out what is the word stem of these words. Okay, so stemming is finding the or obtaining the word stem of a word. Next one is lematization. So the process of obtaining the root stem of a word is called as a lematization. So root stem gives the new base form of a word that is present in the dictionary and from which the word is derived. Okay, so also for example, and, are, is. These are the words already present in the English dictionary way the lema, the rule. The main root word called as a B. So when I. See these words, these kind of words, then I can automatically convert to the basic lema word which is called as a B. Okay, so which is already present in that. The language dictionary. If I am going to use the English as a natural language, this dilemma is going to be B. Same way for each and every language in the words and has the base lema word. I am going to reduce the three words into a single word. That is the meaning, that is the main idea of this lematization. Okay, so I need to reduce the multiple words into us to few words so that my processing becomes easier. Okay, so lematization is one of the concept where I am going to obtain the root stem of a word. So you can also identify the base words for different word based on the means, mood and gender etcetera. Okay, whenever I say E, 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 that refers to the male gender. Whenever I say she, 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 it refers to the female's gender. Okay, and E then they, it refers to the plural. Okay, so likewise each and every word has a certain meaning in the dictionary. So I am going to refer the root stem of a word and according to replace these words. That is by the root stem, okay, that is by the root word, okay, which is found in that particular natural language dictionary. So next step, the part of speech tagging. So what is this part of the speech tagging is? Must explain the concept of nouns, verbs, articles and other parts of the speech to the machine by adding these tags to the words. So if I have a sentence, I am going to split up into various tokens. So I need to identify what is this, whether it is a noun, whether it is a verb, whether it is adjective, whether it is a pre-proposition or and so on. So here stars are twinkling at night. Here in this particular sentence, I am going to divide into various tokens. Where I see that the is going to be the determiner and stars are going to be a noun. Are is going to be the verb, twinkling is going to be the adjective and at is going to be the proposition and night is going to be the noun. So likewise, I need to identify what is that about and I am going to tag it with the respective. Speech tag, this is what we call as a speech tag. Okay, so in a speech, that is in a sentence, I am going to put the tag for each and every word which I am going to find it. Okay, so this is what we call it as a part of speech tagging. So next step is named entity tagging. So what is this named entity tagging is? So we need to introduce the mission to pop the culture references and everyday names by flagging the names, the movies, important personalities, locations etcetera. That means current. So I am going to check whether the particular word is refers to a name, whether the particular name refers to the location. Whether the particular name, word is going to refer to the some movie name or monetary value or any kind of quantity. Okay, so likewise, I need to give a tag to each and every word. Okay, so this is what we call as a named entity tagging. So this can be done by classifying the words into. This has to find any words in the sentence. So the subcategories are person, okay, function, monetary value, quantity organization, movie and so on. Okay, so person, so see for example, round, so round is a person. So that particular word called round is going to be tagged with the person. Okay, and say for example, Chennai. So Chennai is a word which is going to be applied to the location. So it is going to be tagged with the name called location. Okay, so same way monetary value, quantity organization. Each and every word in a sentence is going to be tagged with these particular set of categories, subcategories. Okay, after performing the piece of. Then the resultant data can be given to the machine learning algorithm like navies etcetera. Many algorithms are there, we will come to see it in the upcoming sessions to create an NLP application. Okay, so these, these seven steps I can call it as a data. With the main aim of this data processing is to reduce the number of words. Which can be given to the machine learning model. Okay, so. Can be done in a very faster manner. So next coming on to the natural language processing frameworks and libraries. So when I talk about the NLP libraries, we are going to see about what are the NLP libraries. Then cloud based NLP services and machine learning models. Which we normally use it for the. So coming on to the framework, first one is NLP library. These are the common NLP libraries we use it for NLP itself. Okay, it is complete. It provides a wide range of algorithms for building the machine learning models in Python. Okay, so here. Seven of the machine learning models we have in this library. And then we have other tools like natural language toolkit, shortly called as NLTK. It is a complete toolkit which is going to mainly process the NLP techniques. We are going to have lot of techniques for processing the natural languages. Okay, so we will see it, what are the various techniques? So this tool is going to support a lot of techniques for processing the natural language. Okay, and another one is pattern. Pattern is also a web mining module for NLP as well as for the machine learning. And text B log, it provides an easy interface to learn basic NLP task like sentiment analysis, noun phrase extraction and POS tags. Techniques we are going to use it. Okay, so this for performing this particularly specialized NLP task like this can be done using this text B log. And next one is QPy. QPy is also going to transform any kind of natural language, the questions into. And next one is SpaceTime. SpaceTime is an another open source NLP library which is mainly used for data extraction, analysis, sentiment analysis and also for text summarization. So for these purpose mainly we use this open source NLP library. Okay, for extracting the datas, for analyzing, for sentiment analysis as well as for text summarization. And next one is Gensim. Gensim is also going to process the natural language where the data set is going to be heavy. That is where we are going to have a larger number of data sets and where we need to process a huge amount of data. That is which is going to be in the form of streams. Okay, so streams, it means the data, the real time datas keep on coming to your system. So where I need to process it, in that case I can go for this Gins, Ginsim library. And next one is cloud based NLP services. Okay, so in the cloud platform, what are the NLP services or the libraries we can use it is? One is Google Cloud Natural Language API. It provides some pre-trained models, already some models are there for performing the sentiment analysis for entity recognition and syntax analysis. So entity recognition is nothing but which I told you about the tagging, tagging of the name, tagging of the location in a sentence. So that entity recognition and syntax analysis, all these can be, these NLP tasks can be done. Using the models which is already present in the cloud, in the Google Cloud Natural Language API. And next one is Amazon Comprehender. It also have some NLP capabilities like Google Cloud which also going to perform the NLP task like sentiment analysis, key phrase extraction and language identification. So key phrase extraction is also going to be similar to the keywords. When I see that these keywords have to be extracted from a given paragraph, I can able to extract it and I can also able to find out what is the count of that keywords. In a particular paragraph. And Microsoft Azure Cognitive Services for the language. This is also going to be a suit of lot of NLP services where it is going to perform the task like text analysis, language understanding and speech recognition. So all these, the speech text, the input is going to be in the form of that speech. Way to transform it in the form of text and then understand it and give the reply accordingly. Okay, so these are the several NLP frameworks we can use it in the cloud platform. So next one is machine learning models. There are lot of machine learning models, but out of that, these are the very popular machine learning models. Recurrent neural networks, FX and LSTLM which is very effective of processing that sequential data like text and speech. So. I hope. You could have understand the phases of natural language processing. This is your lexical analyzer. Okay, where the text, that is the, the form of paragraph is going to be segmented into different types of sentences. And then phase two is your synthetic analysis or we call it as a parsing. Okay, where in this. It is going to check for the word arrangement and as well as the grammar. So the sentence Delhi goes to M is going to be there. It is going to check for the word arrangement, accordingly it is going to accept or reject. And semantic is also going to check for the meaning. So if I say I hate hot ice cream, it means hot and ate is going to be irrelevant. That is hot and ice cream is going to be irrelevant to each other. So I am going to reject, the parser is going to reject this type of sentence. Same way colorless green idea, so colorless and green, if you say colorless, it means no other colors should be mentioned in that particular sentence. So even if it is going to be mentioned, then that particular type of statement is going to be rejected by the semantic analyzer. Next one is a discourse integration. Okay, so when I have the current sentence, so that sentence, when I say he wanted that, that refers, that should have been mentioned in the previous statement. As well as when I say this, I, I, I am going to say he wanted ice cream. So whenever this ice cream can be referred in the future also. So it makes an impact in the future as well as the word which is present in the current sentence. I would have taken it from the previous sentence. This is what we call it as a discourse integration. The impact of the sentences before a particular sentence and the effect of the current sentence and the upcoming sentences is determined. Whether the sentences are related with each other or not. Okay, so that is what I am going to find it using this phaser which is called as a discourse integration. Pragmatic analysis is, I am going to identify whether this particular statement is of which type. Whether it is a question, whether it is an order, whether it is a request and so on. Okay, so accordingly I am going to identify this particular statement as an order or request or question and so on. These are the steps of the natural language processing. So first one is a segmentation. So segmentation, I am going to have a sentence where I am going to divide into two subs, two sub-sentences because I have a comma here. So use some punctuations to identify whether the sentences can be segmented or divided into sub-substance, sub-sentences. So use some punctuations to identify whether the sentences can be segmented or divided into sub-substance, sub-sentences. Tokenization where each and every sentence is going to be divided into many tokens. Removing the stop words is nothing but was, in, is and so on. Okay, these words can be removed from the particular sentence because this is not going to give you any meaning for while I am going to process the natural language. Stemming, stemming is nothing but I am going to identify what is the word stem of a word. So I may be having different words in my paragraph. So all these words can be reduced to a word stem by finding what is the root of that particular word. Okay, so skip is one word which I call it as a word stem because when I add some affixes like ing or ed or es, these suffixes when it is added. Okay, so this, this is, since this is the base, base is going to be the skip. So this is called as a word stem of a word. So word stem gives new words way by adding upon the affixes to them. So stemming is nothing but finding the word stem of a word. Lematization is in a dictionary, in any kind of natural language that we are going to use it either in Libya, English or German or Spanish, whatever it is. Each and every natural language has a dictionary. Where the certain words are going to be connected with one word called as a lema. Okay, so where this is called as a root word. So am, are, is, actually it is going to be generated from a root word called as a be. Okay, so which we call it as a lema here. Okay, this is called as a root word, where all these words are going to be the branches from where this lema is going to be the root word. Then part of speech tagging is where in each and every word in the sentences, I am going to tag it with whether it is going to be a name or verb or adjective or position and so on. This is what we call as a part of speech tagging. And named entity tagging is, I am going to, if I have a sentence and in that sentence I have a name, I have a location, then each and every, a name or location is going to be tagged with a name, a location. Chennai means Chennai can be tagged with a location. Then I have Seeta, so Seeta can be tagged with the name. Then I have a organization name, say for example IBM. So IBM can be tagged with the organization. So likewise each and every word can be tagged with the entities which we call it as, either it can be a name of a person, name of the organization or location and so on. So these are some subcategories, person, location, monetary value, quantity, organization, movie etc. So these are called as entities like where each and every word in a sentence can be tagged with these subcategories. Okay, so coming on to the NLP libraries, so. So NLP library, these are the various libraries which we are going to use it. Skycitlearn, then NLTK, Patent, TextBlock, Qpy, Spacie and Gensim. These are the different libraries which we are going to use it for processing the natural language. Then in the cloud platform, these are the popular NLP API we can use it. So one is Google Cloud Natural Language API which is mainly used for performing the task like sentiment analysis, entity recognition and syntax analysis. And next one, Amazon Comprehender, this is also going to perform the task like sentiment analysis, key phrase extraction and language identification. So key phrase extraction is nothing but finding for a particular keyword in a document or in a paragraph. And searching whether this particular key, how many keywords is present for how many times, the count of that particular words in a paragraph. By that way I can find out, this particular keyword plays a very important role in that particular description of that particular paragraph. Then one is Microsoft Azure Cognitive Services for languages. This is also going to provide the NLP services like text analysis, language understanding and speech recognition. Where the input is going to be in the form of speech, where it transforms into text and making my model to understand the particular natural language text and then replied or respond accordingly. And next one is machine learning model, these are the very popular machine learning models which we use it. One is called as a recurrent neural network and LSTM. These two are going to be effective for processing sequential data like text and speech type of datas. Okay, where it is going to have a structure, a proper structure in defining a paragraph or in defining a sentence. And transformer models like B R T and G P T, these are the transformer models which are going to perform various NLP task and offer superior performance compared to the other traditional models. Where the accuracy of these models are going to be very high compared with the traditional machine learning models. Next one is CNN, convolutional neural network which is useful for the task like text classification and mainly for the sentiment analysis. Okay, so only for these two purpose mainly we can go for this algorithm. Next one is popular methods. So popular methods used for natural language process are, first one is machine learning. So these are the two very popular methods. Okay, so even though we have lot of methods that we are going to see, these two are going to be the very popular methods which we use it for the natural language processing. First one is a machine learning. So here the machine learning. The machine, this type of learning has the NLP procedures which are used during the machine learning. So we are going to train the machine in such a way to identify the natural language. So that is the English language. So where we have seen about various tasks that we are going to perform it while processing the natural language. Okay, so we are going to train the machine in such a way to perform the different NLP task. It automatically focuses on the most to common cases and so we write rules by hand, it is often not correct at all concern about the human errors. So see for example, so we are the humans who are going to define the rules, how to process the natural language, how to process the particular text, how to process the particular paragraph in a given document. See, we say these are the rules to be formed. So by forming the rules, by framing the rules and by training the machine to check whether these conditions are being satisfied. Then only we are going to say that this particular sentence is going to give a reply like that. Okay, so we are going to train the machine in such a way to identify, to understand what is a type of context it is and then we are going to, the mission is going to give a reply accordingly. And next one is statistical influence. Statistical influence is nothing but where we use a lot of statistical methods here. Okay, so which we call it as a statistical influence algorithm, it helps you to produce models that are very strong, robust. Example containing the words or structures which are known to everyone. So where we are going to use some mathematical calculations, okay, to identify what is a text about and then to give a reply, give the mission to reply accordingly. So these are the natural language processing tools. These are the various tools which we can use it for NLP. First one is NLTK, natural language toolkit. So this is, we call it as a classical Python library for mainly for teaching and prototyping the NLP. So that is for, basically if you want to understand about the NLP process, then you can use this particular toolkit. Okay, example is building a test classification model for spam detection. If I have a text with me, I can easily identify whether, I am going to, say for example, I am going to say that these are the words that has, or these are the sentences or words that has to be present in a paragraph. If that particular word is present, then it means this good. If those words are not present in the new upcoming sentence, then I call it as a spam. So by that way, I identify whether the particular sentence is a spam or a ham. So ham means good, spam means bad. So I can classify the sentence as a good one or a bad one, or spam or a ham. Okay, based upon the number of the words which are there in the particular sentence. So this is what I classify the words or the sentence as spam or a ham, based upon the words which are available in the particular upcoming sentence, okay, new data. We will see one example and show you what. And Spacie. So Spacie is nothing but industrial strength NLP library with high speed and accuracy. So there are so many lot of functions which are mainly going to be helpful for, in, in order to use for the industrial purpose or company. For example, named entity recognition in resumes or legal documents. Okay, so I am just going to identify or tag each and every word in a sentence to the already defined keyword. For example, I am going to resume, sir. Say for example, I have a thousand, thousands of resumes. Okay, so I didn't identify. The candidate was going to be very good in C plus plus, very good in Java, very good in a Python language and so on. So the keyword is going to be Python or C plus plus or Java. So that I am going to search whether this particular keyword is present in the document accordingly, I am going to find it out. Okay, and I am also going to say CGP has to be greater than nine, CGP has to be greater than eight. Accordingly it is going to target and it is going to find it. The way the processing is going to be very easier for the selecting the resumes. Filtering, filtering process will be very easy for us if I am going to go for this named entity recognition. That is we call this A N E R, A N E R can be done using the Spacie library. Next one is a text below. So it is also going to be a simple NLP tool which is built on top of the NLTK and Patent. Okay, so mainly it is going to be helpful for the sentiment analysis and customer reviews. For example, in a market, the market, except example in the online market, I can able to, I am just going to get the review from the customers and I am going to find out whether my product is going to be or is going to, whether it has reached the customers in a good way or in a bad way. So if the customers, if multiple customers are going to give you a good statement, then it is going to be a good review. Otherwise it is going to be a bad, otherwise it can also be good. If both, say for example, I have ten customers who have given a review about a particular product. Out of which seven customers have given awesome, good, excellent and so on. But few customers have given very bad, it's not good. So likewise negative words I am going to identify and that can be treated as negative polarity. And all these awesome, excellent and so on can be treated as positive polarity. So seven is going to be greater than three, so it means finally I can say that this particular product is of good. Okay, because there are seven positive polarity then, which is going to be greater than three negative polarity. Okay, so if it is going to cross more than five itself, I can see that it is of positive, positive. I can conclude that the product is good. If more number of negative polarity, more number of negative reviews, negative words are the not good, not excellent, not, not, not and so on. In that case, it can be treated as negative. If both positive and negative review is going to be equal, I can say it as neutral. I cannot conclude it is positive or I cannot conclude it as negative. I have to conclude it as neutral. And next one is Gensim. Gensim is nothing but it is specialized in topic modeling and document similarity. So like discovering the trends from the news articles using N D. So topic modeling, so I am just going to find it, there are so many news articles in the database. So I am just going to find out a particular. News about sports, for example about a cricket. So cricket reviews alone, I want to collect it from multiple news articles, so I can. Calling the topic, I am going to give a keyword and based on the keyword it is going to extract the news articles from these particular multiple news articles and document similarity. I am also going to find out whether a particular, the two or three documents are going to be similar with each other. Say for example, I give a topic like NLP. So there is so many thousands and thousands of documents which are there in the search engine. So in that case, each and every document is going to be listed to you, but on what basis it is going to be listed, based upon the ranking. So whichever words, whichever document which has a higher number of keywords in that particular document, that document is going to be listed as rank one. And similarly, each and every word I am going to find it in each and every document and number of count of words, keywords which are present in each and every document. Whichever document which has a higher number of keywords, that is going to be ranked as one and similarly rank two, rank three, rank four and so on. This is what we call as a document similar comparing the documents with respect to a keyword and I am finding what is the rank of these documents. And next one is Stanford Core NLP. Okay, so this is proposed by Stanford and this is mainly going to be a Java based NLP. Where suppose multiple languages and deep linguistic analysis, okay, multiple natural languages can be supported. Each and every, for each and every natural language also we can have a separate NLP tool. Okay, it also, it is not necessary these tools will support all types of languages. Okay, so some NLP tools will support only few languages, like most standard languages, English, most probably it will support. And for German, it may be a separate NLP tool, for Spanish, it may be a separate NLP tool, for Japan, maybe a separate NLP tools and so on. Okay, so I need to train the model, I need to train the mission in such a way it is going to understand that those languages and appropriate the reply. Okay, so this particular NLP is going to be a Java base and it supports multiple languages and it also have a deep linguistic analysis like P O S tagging. As we have discussed about part of speech tagging, okay, so where each and every word is going to be related to a subcategories like name, location, organization name and so on. And dependency parsing in research papers, okay. I am going to identify whether each and every paper has a relevant kind of references. So when I have one paper, I have a references, whether these references are relevant to the topic or the title of the particular paper or not, okay. So this dependency parsing can also be checked using this core NLP. Yeah, another one is Open NLP which is Apache library for basic NLP task in Java. Okay, so it has a library, okay, but it can perform only the basic NLP task like tokenization and chunking. So tokenization as we have discussed, where the sentence is broken up into different tokens and chunking is also separating into various words like in email. In email passing systems. And next one is hugging face transformers. So this is also one of the tool where we use different types of models like B R T and G P T. Example, applications where you can use it a chatbot, where the questions can be given and is going to reply accordingly. And text summarization, where you have a lot of paragraphs, where you need to summarize about that particular document, then you can do so using this hugging face transformers and question answering. So same way, so that the particular question can be given and it can also give a reply accordingly. Okay, chatbot is going to act like helping us as a tool. Where it is like FAQ, where any kind of questions can be given, where it is going to give the answers which are already there in the database like. And next one is a flyer, this is also a simple NLP library for mainly used for sequence labeling. Like for example, named entity recognition with contextual embedding. So named entity recognition as, as we have discussed about before, like a particular name, word can be tagged with a particular name or organization and so on, okay. So this with respect to the context, with respect to the particular environment is going to, okay, I am going to not refer that single, the current sentence alone, okay. I am going to find out what, what was there in the previous sentence, what was there in the previous two or more sentences before the current sentences, okay. Based upon the context, we are going to process it. So I may be saying this is, what is this, this refers to what, that is, so that refers to what, I need to refer the previous statements, what they are saying about. And then only come to a particular conclusion that that refers to this particular entity. Okay, so this is what we call as a named entity recognition. And next one is Alan NLP, this is also one of the deep learning based NLP results library by Aitman. And this is going to be reading comprehension models and semantic role labeling, okay. So it is going to find the, it is going to process each and every word and find out what is the meaning of these words in a sentences or in a given paragraph or in a particular document, okay. And next one is a poly dot, it is also going to be. NLP library which is going to support multiple languages and mainly used for sentiment analysis and A N E R for non-English languages other than English language, okay. Next one is. Last one is Tansy Ract which is nothing but converting the image to the text format. Okay, so whenever the input, image is going to be the image format, that also can be converted into the text format. So which we call it as optical character recognition, processing the scanned forms and. So which we call it as optical character recognition, processing the scanned forms and extracting the text for the N L P for processing. The N L P, okay, that is for processing the natural language. So once I get the text format, then we are going to go for the. Performing the different phases in N L P, okay. So first we need to convert the needs to the text format. So this uh Taser Act can be used for converting the image to the text and then we are going to process the. Words which are present in the text format. So these are the different tools which we use it. Next, coming on to the applications, N L P is one of the ways that people have humanized missions and reduce the need for the labor of course. Okay, so we are going to reduce the workload of the humans by training the machine to process the text and understand. And then give a reply accordingly and it has led to the automation of speech related task and human interaction also. Okay, where if the human is going to reply, the same way I am going to train the machine and asking the machine to reply accordingly. And some applications of N L P include, first one is translation tools, so like tools such as Google Translate. Amazon Translate etcetera, which will translate the sentences from one language to another using N L P. So if I want to translate, I want to uh know the meaning of one language, then I can do so by giving the. Language, one language as a text format and then asking to convert to another language. Even that can be too done using the popular translation tools like Google Translate or Amazon Translate and so on. Next one is, we have a chatbot. Chatbot also can be found in most of the websites where it is going to act like a help assistant. Where these companies are going to use it to deal with common queries quickly, okay. So like F A Q. Okay, so frequently ask questions. So using the chatbot, I can make my. Website to be very active by responding to the answers where the user is going to ask it. Okay, where it is going to have the already predefined answers for these questions, based on that it is going to retrieve the answers and give it to you. And virtual assistants like Siri, Cortana, Google Home, Alexa etcetera can not only talk to you, but also understand the comments given. Okay, so it's not the matter of understanding the text, okay, so what type of reply it has to be, that is more important. If it is going to be ordered, if it is going to be requested, if it is going to be a command, so on, okay. So whether it is going to be a question, whether it is going to be a declaration. So it has to understand what is the type of text accordingly, uh the virtual assistant can able to reply it. So these are some virtual assistants which have it, where it can uh give a reply to the user. And next one is a targeted ad advertising. Okay, so where I want to talk about a product or service or just Google something and then started seeing the ads for it. I want to purchase a new product, okay, so before going on for purchasing, I need to see what is that. Reviews about that particular product, okay, so it is called as a targeted advertising, that is uh. If the company is going to launch a new product, then he has to advertise. Before advertising a new revision or new version of a particular product, he has to see what is already of the old product. And then only he has to go for launching a new product, okay. So this targeted advertising helps to generate tons of revenue for sellers. As they can reach niche audiences at the right time, so good audiences, okay, niche audiences here means good audiences at the right time. So based upon, so if you do a good advertising of a particular product, then of course it will reach. A good audiences where they will, they will have an intention to buy the particular product. So this is what we call a targeted advertising, okay. So instead of giving advertisement to the new customers. Science is going to give a or posted to the already existing customers so that they will refer. Their new friends so that they can buy the particular products. Okay, so this is what we call as a target. The company has to target to whom the particular advertisement of a product can be done accordingly. They can increase the revenue of that particular product. The next one is autocorrect. This will automatically correct any spelling mistakes you make apart from the grammar checks. Also comes in the picture which helps to, helps you to write the flawlessly, okay, so any kind of sentences. Automatically you can be able to check for the spelling is corrected, along with the grammar checkers also. So grammar checkers and spelling, uh spelling mistakes can be corrected using this autocorrect. Which is also one of the main applications which you can use it. So information readable in web search like Google, Yahoo, Bing and other search engines. Based the machine translation technology on N L P deep learning models, where they use this deep learning models. To retrieve the information from the web search engine, okay. It allows the algorithm to read the text on the webpage. Interpret its meaning and translate it into another language. If you want it, you can translate it to another language. Okay, so say for example, I want the papers on N L P, then I can give these keywords, so based on these keywords. Uh the search engine is going to do a search and it is going to retrieve the list of papers which are relevant to the same. If you wanted to translate to other language also, you can do the translations, okay, so. Next one is grammar correction, so same way, N L P technique is widely used by word processor software like Enmasword for spelling correction and grammar. Like autocorrect, this grammar correction.
Why is it not available now?
Next one is question answering, okay, so question type answer. So type in the keywords to ask the questions in the natural language format. In natural language like English, let's say for example, English, okay. You type some uh. Questions, where the questions is going to have the keywords, the main keywords. So based on the, based upon the keyword. The chatbot or virtual assistant is going to give the answer of one, okay. So this is also one type of applications of N L P. And next one is a text summarization, the process of summarizing the important information from the source to produce. Shortened words. Say for example, I have a document which is going to be of ten to fifteen pages. I don't have time to read all the, each and every word which are present in the document, so I want, I am asking the N L P tool. To summarize the document, yes of course it can be able to do it and give it in the form of a shortened paragraph. Okay, so this is going to reduce my time also, it is going to save my time also, so that I can get the crisp of that particular document. And next one is a machine translation, so it uses the computer application to translate the text or speech. From one natural language to the another lan- natural language, okay, so there are so many languages like where we have English. We have a Tamil also, we have Hindi, so these are the several languages we have it. Okay, I can able to translate from one language to another language using this type of N L P tools. So either the input can be of text format or you can also speech, you can also speak and then that. Speech is going to be transformed into a text format. And next one, these are the various applications of natural language processing, other than this, we are going to use it for development of writing aids for. Like for example, for giving a good, for writing purpose, we can use this N L P tool. So that it is going to give you a formal description about a particular document, then foreign language reading aids. Where I can able to read even the foreign languages into my own natural language, into my own native language. And then question and answer for systems, computer conversation, so I can have a conversation or interact with the computer directly. Then I can understand the text format, what it means actually, then access to any kind of information through the web engine. And then extracting the information contained in the text, I can extract what type of information it is. Like whether it is a name, whether it is a location, I can tag it with each and every subcategory, then understand the speech. Okay, where I can convert it into one another text format, then voice interaction with the computer I can have it. Summary of the text I can get it, interlingual translation, so I can be able to translate to multiple languages. Then writing is in a foreign language, so, so I can also. In my natural language, in my native language, I can write it and can translate it into another language also, okay, and reading the printer text and. Correcting the reading errors, okay, even this uh checking for the spelling mistakes, checking for the grammar. Even I can do it using this N L P tool and find and replace, I can find for the appropriate word. Okay, and I can replace it with the good professional words also and then correction of spelling mistakes. So these are the various applications of N L P where I can use it for daily purpose, okay. Coming out of the advantages of N L P, so user can ask the questions about any subject and get. Can get the direct response within seconds, okay. So you can ask, using N L P, you can ask any kind of questions. Where you want to clarify more and the virtual assistants or chatbot will clarify, okay. And N L P system provides answer to the patients in natural language, in whichever language you give the questions. In that language itself, it is going to give a response. And N L P system offers exact answers to the patients, no unnecessary or unwanted information. So it is going to give you only the relevant answers, it is not going to give you any irrelevant or unwanted answers. See, check for the meaning accordingly, only it is going to respond. The accuracy of the, of the answers increases with the amount of relevant information provided to the patients. So how well you frame the question, okay, by that way, the N L P tool also going to respond you or give you a. Correct way of response. Okay, the accuracy is going to depend upon the way of question formulation. Yes, we have to be very careful in giving the, framing the sentences, in framing the questions which has the correct keywords in them. And next one, N L, N L P process, help the computers to communicate with the humans in their own languages and skills other languages with the task. So even though you don't know the other languages, you can able to uh translate from your native language to other foreign languages also. It allows you to perform more language based data compares to a human being without chanting and in an unbiased and consistent. Okay, you don't have to worry about uh whether you don't know about this particular language, whether you are not familiar with your own native language. Okay, the system knows everything. So the system will give you a proper response according to the queries you give it or according to the. Actions that you want to perform it, okay. And structuring a highly unstructured data source. Okay, so where you have unstructured data, that is the text format or the speech, all are going to be highly unstructured. Or the image also, okay, which you are going to give it as input, that is also a unstructured format. Where you can give the, where you can give it as a question to the N L P tool, where it is going to give you a. Uh reply in a correct structured format, where it is going to process it and give you a good reply, good response accordingly. Where it is going to be a structured format for you, okay. Disadvantages. So first one is complex query language. The system may not be able to provide the correct answer. If the question that is poorly worded or un- ambiguous, so if you are not going to frame the question properly. Sometimes the mission itself gets confused what type of reply it has to give, okay. So the query has to be very specific and very formatted one, which has to have a good keywords in it. The system is built for a single and specific task only, it is unable to adapt to new domains and problems because of limited functions. So one by one only you can be able to perform it, you cannot able to perform multiple tasks at a time. If it is going to give a lot of, keep on giving questions to the N L P, it will take more time to process it, okay. So sometimes it is not able to adapt to the new type of questions needed. So N L P system does not have a user interface which lacks the features that allows the user to further interact with the system, okay. So some, you don't have, it has a tool where you can give a question, where you can summarize a text and so on, so many tasks can be performed. But it does not have a good user interface, it has, it does not have a good user interface in the sense. By using a command, by clicking, by clicking this particular question, the already predefined questions are not there. Okay, you need to give it accordingly and you need to generate the answers or you have to get the answers accordingly, okay. So some N L P tools does not have a, use a proper user interface uh so that the user can. Be freely interact with the particular system, okay. So these are the few disadvantages of the N L P. Next one is coming on to the future. So human readable natural language processing is the biggest AI problem, okay. So all the natural language cannot be understood by the machines. If you want the machines to understand. You have to train the machine accordingly, the more and more you train the machines, the accuracy will be good. So it is almost same as solving the central AI problem and making the computers as intelligent as people. So if you want more accuracy, you more have to train the machine accordingly. Future computers or machines with the help of the N L P will be able to learn from the information online and apply that in the real world. However, lots of work need to be done in this regard. So in the future, I can have a full N L P where I can able to uh train the model in such a way. Where online as the user gives the questions, I can keep on replying it accordingly. But this will take a lot of work because each and every user will give different types of queries, okay. So these questions must be framed properly, it should have a proper keywords and so on. So if I want my model to answer all types of questions, then I have to train more and more. In such a way, the accuracy of the model is going to be good, it has, it can be able to give a reply to all types of questions that the user is complicated. Okay, but it will take some time. Natural language toolkit or N L T K becomes more effective, okay, so here. The toolkit, I have to model it in such a way, I need to perform different types of tasks in order to process my natural language. So that has to be more effective. So in order to be effective, more work, more training has to be done. Combined with the natural language generation, computers will become more capable of receiving and giving useful and resourceful information on the data. So once I get a good model, okay, for performing different types of N L P task. Then that can be used for all types of purpose, where the user can be uh free from. Going on to other types of tools also, okay, so text summarization, we can do, sentiment analysis we can do it. We can able to process the text in a quicker way and get the response easily, okay, provided we need to frame the mission accordingly. Okay, so this is what the introduction to the N L P. So with this, I'll stop. And the next session after the break, I'll start with this industry five point zero. See, the next is going to be the industry five point zero, so we'll see about what is that industry five point zero. And the N L P task that we are going to do within the industry five point zero and we'll have a query session also. Okay, there I'll give you some questions and please try to answer the pattern. So can we have a break?
Can you resume the session ma'am?
This means the good start ma'am.
So in this session we will just see the interaction tool with industry five point zero and what are the various task of NLP that we can do within industry four point zero. So first what is industry five point zero? It refers to the robot and smart machines that can work alongside with the people with added drizzle lines and sustainability goals which can be included. So industry four point zero it is going to focus on the technology such as IOT and the big data but industry five point zero it seeks to add some human environmental and social aspect. So to know the exact difference between industry four point zero and five point zero, we can just compare this four point zero with the five point zero. With respect to the smart manufacturing, in industry four point zero they were concentrating on mass production and global competitiveness. But whereas in the case of the five point zero, they were working on human robot co-working. Okay, so here they were designing the robot in such a way it can collaborate with the humans, it can interact with the humans more, okay, to have a and it can respond it accordingly. So we just call this as a smart society, sustainability and mass personalization. So these are the main features of this industry five point zero, we call this as a human robot co-working. Robot and the humans are going to work together to develop a smart society and to reach the sustainability goals and as well as mass personalization. And coming onto the power source, it was using the fossil based fuels in the industry four point zero, electrical power and renewable power sources. In the case of the industry five point zero, with respect to the power sources, it was using the electrical power and renewable power sources but fossil based fuels are not used here. Since it has to renew the energy, so it was not using that fossil base. And involved technologies in industry four point zero is IOT, cloud, big data, robotics and AI. In the case of the five point zero, human robot collaboration, a special type of technology here we are going to use it called as a human robot collaboration. So in industry four point zero they were using the robots but the robots were not interacting with the humans. But in the industry five point zero, the robots were made to interact with the humans. So human robot collaboration was much effective in the case of the industry five point zero. And they were able to achieve the sustainable agricultural production, bionics and renewable resources. So these are the main technologies which were involved in the industry five point zero. And last one is research areas in industry four point zero where process management, process improvement, innovation and here also we have it. Apart from that, we were mainly using it for agriculture research, biology and waste prevention. So in these areas, industrial areas also we were trying to use this technologies. These are the major differences between industry four point zero and five point zero. Coming onto the NLP in industry five point zero, so as we know what is this NLP, natural language processing? It was playing a crucial role in industry five point zero by facilitating enhanced human mission interaction and enabling smarter, more efficient industrial processes. Mainly they were using for the industrial processes, okay, automation of industrial processes where the human can able to interact with the robots in effectively. And NLP also machine allows the machines to understand, interpret and generate human language leading to more intuiting communication and improved automation in various applications mainly for industrial applications. Okay, so we are training the machine in such a way, we are training the robot in such a way to understand the natural language, process it and reply or respond it immediately. So what we can expect in two thousand twenty five, by the end of two thousand twenty five, first one is enabled robotics. These are some examples. So enabled robotics in the sense working to integrate cobots with autonomous mobile robots. Okay, so what is this cobots? Is collaborative robot. Okay, so in the next slide I would discuss about this cobot. Cobot is means collaborative robot, which means it is a type of industrial robot which is designed to work safely alongside with the humans in a shared workspace. Okay, so humans and the robot work together, okay, they collaborate with each other, that is what we call it as a cobot. So unlike this traditional industrial robots, cobots are designed to interact directly with the humans, perform the task that require more dexterity which means handiness, where the robot can be very familiar, user can easily interact with the robot. It is very user friendly and flexibility than the standard robots. So here enabled robotics, so where we going to work to integrate the cobots with autonomous mobile robots. Okay, so mobile robots, you know that way the robots keep on moving from one place to another place. So this combination of cutting edge technologies allows for increased automation and collaboration in the manufacturing process enabling the greater personalization as given. Where most of the industries are developing or using this enabled robotics where it has the features of cobots and as well as AMR. AMR is autonomous mobile robot, where the robots can move from one place to another place. As more industries adopt the automation to solve issues with the supply chains and lab shortages, the demand for the intelligent robots is expected to go. Second one is we are expecting to develop more intelligent robots. Okay, so more intelligent robots, what do you mean by that intelligent robots? It has to adapt to the environment, okay, and respond it accordingly. Okay, so we may say that robots can respond it as per the static. That is I am going to say these are the questions will be asked, these are the answers that we have to give it. These are static robots and dynamic robots in the sense where the new situation may be given. Okay, it has to understand it and then it has to reply or respond accordingly. Okay, so the one of the major things, intelligent robots are expected to grow by end of two thousand twenty five. So one major trend is development of the robots that can operate in dynamic environments where the environment keeps on changing. Okay, new type of environment, new situation arises. So when the new situation arises, the robot have to understand the environment and respond it accordingly. Okay, that is what we expect in two thousand twenty five, by the end of two thousand twenty five. And cobot industry grew to a whopping USD two point two billion by two thousand twenty six with more and more companies turning to cobots. Okay, so slowly the robots are being transformed to the cobots. Cobots means what as we have discussed, collaborative robot, it's a type of industrial robot where they are mainly going to use it in the industrial purposes, designed to work safely alongside with the humans in a shared workspace where the humans and the robot work together to achieve a particular goal. Unlike this traditional industrial robots, cobots are designed to interact directly with the humans often performing the task that require more handiness and flexibility than the standard cobots. So the main difference between robots and cobots are, first one is robots are large scale precision high speed operations. It can be used for large scale purpose but cobots it is a small scale adaptable and collaborative task. Okay, mainly thing is collaborative, it can collaborate with the humans, it can work along with the humans, okay, and it is of small scale only. And it can operate in isolated And it can operate in isolated environments. Here it can operate or collaborate with the humans in the shared spaces. Whether it can be shared, it can, where we can keep it in a shared space where the humans also involved in achieving a particular goal along with the robots. And this need of programming skills, here intuitive programming interfaces. We need an interface, the human has to interact with the robot, so for that we need a good interface. So, we need a programming interfaces where the humans can be able to interact with the robots. If they suitable for faster cycle times and machine learning skills is master. Okay, the the human have to work along with the robot, the robot has to be very well trained. Okay, as per the human need, the human language has to be understood by the particular machine. So, machine learning skills is important in the case of the cobots. Next one is increased user simulation and virtual reality in manufacturing to test and optimize the manufacturing processes. Okay, so we are using this simulation tools and V R tools also in order to test and optimize the process, manufacturing processes before it is implemented in the real world. So, before it has been launched into the market, we keep on testing it for various iterations, okay, so that the model is well developed, well trained, so that it is going to give a good accuracy in the market. So, this main intention is to reduce the risk of errors and as well as the downtime. And last one is user predictive maintenance. It means by using the data from sensors and other sources to predict, when the equipment is likely to fail, manufacturers can schedule the maintenance before a problem occurs, reducing the downtime in the cost. So, predictive maintenance in the sense I have to keep on checking whether the robot is correctly working. If it's some errors, a small failure is going to happen, I have to give it for maintenance so that I have to identify what is the type of error, why that failure occurs and so on, so that I can recover from that. I can able to tolerate any kind of failures in the future also. I have to rectify it and recover it so that it is going to work perfectly in the future. So, I have to give some time for a schedule, some time for maintenance also, okay, so that the word robot works perfectly. And great adoption of advanced analytics and A I in manufacturing. So, I am going to use some analytics tools also and as well as A I tools also in this robots in such a way to analyze the data and make predictions what will happen in the future. So, what kind of questions are the human may ask, what kind of environment we can able to face it so that the machine is ready to respond to any kind of situation, to any kind of questions also. An increased connectivity with the I O T which will help to connect the machines, devices and systems, providing real time data and insights into the manufacturing processes. So, here as we are using the I O T also, sensors, different types of sensors, we can able to connect the different devices together to collect the data, to do the analysis and to predict what will happen in the future also. And creating use of blockchain technology also for supply chain traceability which will enable the manufacturer to quickly and easily track the origin of the raw materials and confidence as well as the movement of finished goods through the supply chain. So, I can able to, once any kind of product has been launched into the market, I can able to track where it has gone. If I want to shift it from one location to another location, I need to keep on tracking where it goes and so on, whether it does reach the customer or not. So, whether it does reach the particular market or not and so on. So, I can keep on able to track these products also, okay, using this blockchain technology in a secure manner. I am going to give some security so that these, I am going to find out whether these particular products are going to reach the destination in a correct way, within a particular scheduled time. So, these were the important factors that we expected by two thousand twenty five. Next to moving on to the N L P techniques in industry five point zero. So, first one is N L P technique, these are the important techniques that we are going to use at industry five point zero. One is N L U, N L U is natural language understanding. It enables the machines to grasp the meaning of the human language. So, I am going to train the machine in such a way to grasp each and every word that the user is going to give it to the machine. And I am going to find what is the meaning of those words and accordingly, I am making my mission to respond it. Okay, so that is most important. So, I am going to enable or train the machine in such a way to understand the meaning of this human language, the natural language which is given by the user. This is N L U. And next one is natural language generation. I am going to allow the missions to generate the human quality text. What is that is ability of the machine to produce human like text or speech that is very clear, concise and engaging. Okay, I am making my mission to train in such a way to give a response as if humans are going to give a reply. So, how will the humans reply? Like the same way I am making my mission to train it and give a reply in such a way, the reply is similar to the human reply. So, that is what they say is human quality text. So, it involves a task like text summarization, storytelling, dialogue systems and speech synthesis. So, all these are part of the task which are involved in this natural language generation shortly called as N L G. And next one is sentiment analysis. It determines the emotional tone of the text data. When any text paragraph is being given to the particular mission, the mission is going to understand what is the tone of that particular each and every word in that particular paragraph, whether it is going to be a positive, whether it is going to be negative, whether it is going to be neutral or what is the expression of the particular human, where the text is given by the particular human. That is what we call as a sentiment analysis. And named entity recognition, already we have seen about that. It identifies and categorizes the name, the entities in the text like whether in a particular sentence, whether the name of the particular person is given, name of the organization is given, any location name is given and so on. I am going to tag accordingly whether this particular word is a name or a location or organization and so on. So, this is what we call as a named entity recognition. And next one is text summarization. It contains a large amount of text which is short to summarize. Okay, so as I told you before, if I have a very large document which is going to be of fifteen to twenty pages, I am just going to, I don't have a reader. I don't have enough time to read each and every word in the document. Instead, I can generate a summary of that particular document by using this text summarization task, which is one of the important tasks in the N L P. Where it is going to reduce the processing time of the user. So, next one is N L P, N L P techniques in industry five point zero. We are just going to see in brief about each and only techniques. What we had discussed here, five techniques we are going to see one by one. So, first one is the N L U, natural language understanding. So, it is nothing but it's a subfield of the natural language processing. It is focused on enabling the machines to understand the meaning, context and intent of the human language. So, I need to understand the natural language. So, in order to do that, I need to find what is the meaning of each and every word, in which context, in which context they have given, specify that particular word and what is the intent of the human language that is natural language. Okay, I need to identify the complete meaning of each and every word which is described in that particular question which is given by the humans. So, how N L U works? Here you can see that N L U systems, these are the major components. One is linguistic rules, machine learning algorithms, statistical models. Using these three components only, it can able to understand the natural language or the human language accurately. Okay, so I need, these three components are very important for the N L U system to understand about the natural language accurately. Next one is, this N L U system will transform the unstructured language data, that is the text or speech or image data whatever which is given. That unstructured data, it will convert into the structured information so that the machine can able to perform the different types of tasks like sentiment analysis, entity recognition and intent classification. So, all the three types of task can be performed by the N L P systems after transforming the unstructured data to the structured format. And mainly it enables the, and how it can do is it has to use some modern techniques like deep learning and transformers and so on. Some algorithm, it has to use it to do these particular N L U task. That is the sentiment analysis, entity recognition and intent classification. So, where we can use this as N L U is, it enables the mission for example chatbots. Chatbot is one of the main application where it is going to interact with the humans in ways that feel intuitive and natural. Okay, so whenever the human is going to give you questions, each and every word is going to be identified, the meaning of each and every word is going to be identified by the mission and it is going to check whether it is of positive or negative, whether it is neutral, accordingly the mission also going to reply it. Okay, so this chatbot is one of the main example for the natural language understanding where it plays a major role in understanding the meaning of each and every word which is given by the user and appropriately reply it. Next one is N L G. Okay, so N L G is nothing but natural language integration. So, as we have discussed, it is going to generate a natural language, the humans are going to, that is the missions are going to give a reply to the humans as if it is similar to the human reply. That is what we call as N L G, so a natural language generation. It is a use of A I programming to produce written or spoken narratives from the data set. So, N L G is also going to be related to human to machine or machine to human interaction. Anyway, the human are going to interact with the mission or the mission also can give some queries to the humans also, but the humans also can able to give a reply. Okay, because if the question is not clear, again the mission is going to ask few more questions to get clarity of that particular topic. Okay, so the missions also can interact with the humans saying that posting some more questions to the humans to get more clarifications. So, including computational linguistics, N L P and N L U. So, all these are going to be related with each other for having this kind of interactions. And applications are, before going on to application, these are the six steps that we are going to use it for natural language generation. First one is, first one is content analysis. It means filtering the data and identifying the important content. I am going to filter, filter the words which is important, which is not important. So, the punctuation or the prepositions are not required for me to analyze the data. These words can be removed, okay. And then data understanding, interpreting the data, identifying the patterns and put it in it in a particular context, okay. So, giving some meanings to it. Then document structure, creating a document plan and narrative structure. So, I am just going to order the statements correctly, okay, where you can have a structured datas, okay. And sentence aggregation, so here I am going to combine the relevant sentences to summarize the topic. So, here what I can do is, once in a paragraph I will be having various sentences, I am going to remove unwanted words and I am going to form a proper structure after forming the proper structure of different sentences, now I am going to relate it to each other. So, by forming a tree like structure, okay, where some sentences can be related to other or interconnected to the other sentences also. So, I am just going to integrate or aggregate the sentences together to form a proper, to summarize about a particular topic. Okay, so those sentences which are not relevant to a particular topic, those sentences also can be removed, those words can also be removed from the particular paragraph. And then grammar structure, applying the grammatic rules to create a natural sounding text. Okay, so I am going to check for the meaning and the syntax of the particular each and every word or the sentences in a particular paragraph. And then language presentation. Finally, I am going to summarize the data and after checking all the rules, syntactic and semantic rules, everything is over. Then finally, I am going to summarize the data. That is what we call it as a language presentation, formatting and presenting in the final. So, yeah. This is a step by step process where we call it as six steps to generate a natural language. To summarize, text summarization is one of the good example for this, okay, and chatbot also. So, generating the response, these are the applications, few applications, we have so many applications. These are the main applications we are going to use, generating the responses of the chatbot and voice assistant such as Google Alexa and Apple Siri. And converting the financial report and other types of business data into easily understood content for employees and the customers. So, I may be having the form of graphs or I may be having the form of charts. I can convert it into the readable format where the humans can be able to understand about that particular graph or a chart, okay, which is given. Okay, where we have analyzed the data and sending a report to the particular user. Okay, so we are going to present it in such a way, way the humans can be able to understand about the analysis. Next one is sentiment analysis. Sentiment analysis, we know that it is a process of determining the emotional tone or expressed in a piece of text. It identifies whether the text conveys a positive or a negative or neutral sentiment. So, what is the type of sentence, whether it is a positive note or negative note or whether it is going to be of equal note. Generally, we have a measure for measuring the sentiment of a particular sentence. For example, the the range is going to be of zero to one. So, if it is going to be zero, I can say it is of negative, less than zero, it is going to be of negative. If it is going to be greater than or equal to one, I say it is a positive. If it is going to be between, it means somewhat neutral, zero point five, I can call it as a neutral. Otherwise, less than zero point five, I can call it as a negative also. It all depends upon how I set the measure of the polarity of the sentence. So, first I need to collect the data, then clean up the data that removing all the unwanted words from the sentence. Then analyze the sentiment, whether it is positive or negative or neutral and give a score to it accordingly. I have to measure what is a polarity and then use the result to finally conclude whether it is of positive review or negative review and so on. It can be used for product reviews or any kind of customer reviews can be given and can be undergone a sentiment analysis task to determine whether the reviews are positive or negative, how many customers have given a positive review, how many customers have given a negative review, how many of them have given a neutral, one and so on. This can be used. Examples like customer support, it plays a vital role in customer support, helping the agents prioritize the messages based on the emotional tone. By analyzing the emails, it can detect frustration or anger allowing teams to address urgent issues promptly. So, I can, the manager can be able to ask some queries to the team members. And the team members can give a messages. So, by analyzing the messages, I can able to identify what is that tone about, whether it is a positive or negative or whether it is of neutral and so on. So, this is where I can be able to identify what is the emotional expression behind those messages which is given as a feedback to the managers by the employer, employee team members. Another one is product feedback. Imagine launching a new product by analyzing the customer feedback on social media using sentiment analysis. Business can watch whether the reception is a positive or negative. So, I can be able to get the feedback about a particular product which is newly launched into the market. And voice of the customer, with sentiment analysis companies can effortlessly transcribe the phone calls, detecting whether the customers are satisfied or dissatisfied. Yeah, I am just going to ask the customer feedback through the phone call by recording the voice messages and analyzing what is the tone of the particular customer, whether it is positive or negative and accordingly I can able to come to a conclusion that these products are of giving a good review or these products are giving a bad review also. These are all very valuable data which can improve the services based on the direct customer sentiment. Next one is social media monitoring. Social media offers a unique opportunity to monitor the public sentiment. Sentiment analysis tools can scan the posts or comments, identify the emerging trends in how people feel about a particular brand or a product or something. So, by posting some advertising, the product, about a particular product, if someone gives a comment, I am just going to put it for the sentiment analysis task and I am going to analyze whether it is a good or bad or neutral and so on. So that I can keep on monitor about what the people, what the public people thinks about a particular product or about a particular service or about a particular brand and so on. Next one is named entity recognition. Okay, it is a subtask of the information extraction in natural language processing that classifies the main entities into the predefined categories such as person names, organization, location, the medical course, time expressions, quantities, monetary values and so on. There are so many types of categories. Way I am going to take each and every word in a sentence where I am going to tag that word to a particular subcategory so that I can group all these subcategories together. For example, here I have unstructured text, first I am going to give it to the sentence. For example, here I have unstructured text, first I am going to give it to the sentence segmentation where the sentence is being segmented into various words. That is what we call as a tokenization, then P O S, okay, and tagging, that is what we are going to target and then we are going to. Uh give it for feature processing, okay, so what are the important features or attributes which are there in the particular sentence. Just a key word in that particular sentence and then extraction model using this model, I am going to recognize it and then classify. Uh what type of categories, what type of features it is going to describe about, okay, so finally I will be getting like this. So if I have this particular unstructured texture, then each and every word is being tagged with the particular category, subcategory, so this is called D N region. And this is N K cell, this is called cell type and so on, okay, so likewise, this is what we call as a structured texture. Once we give the structured texture to the model, we can use it for many other purposes also, okay, so to identify what is that. Uh whether it is going to be of, or the mission can reply it accordingly, so I can easily identify this is about the cell type. And the mission can be able to identify, so the user is going to ask about the cell type, so we need to reply it accordingly, okay. So it is easy for identifying, once we do this named entity recognition, we can. Say that mission can be able to easily go through the other stages of the N L P, okay, so this is like pre-processing one. Next one is text summarization. This is also one of the N L P tasks. It is the process of generating short, fluent and most importantly accurate summary of the respect. Of a respectively longer text to document, so when I give a longer text to document as an input, then I can summarize the data in a very clearly understandable way, okay. So this text summarization, it all based upon the type of input, like whether we are going to give a single document or multiple document. And it is based on the purpose, whether it is for generic purpose or whether it is going to be domain, so to speak, or query based. Whether the user is going to give a question and the mission has to reply accordingly, or whether it is based upon the output type, extractive and abstractive. So extractive in the sense, for example here. Extractive in the sense, here we are just going to give a data or a document to the particular machine. And it is going to be, I am going to say, you need to summarize the data only by forming, by using the rules, that is called extractive. An abstractive is the mission itself is going to that understand the meaning of each and every word and then accordingly it is going to give it, that is called abstractive, okay. Extractive is the humans are going to set rules accordingly, it is going to summarize it, okay, abstractive is the mission is going to understand some meaning for it. And accordingly, it is going to summarize the data. Okay, so what are the steps which is involved in text summarization is text cleaning, sentence tokenization, word tokenization, word frequency table summarization. Text cleaning is removing unwanted words, sentence after removing it, we are going to tokenize the sentence into words. After word tokenization is over, we are going to pick up which is the adverb, which is the. Verb, which is the adverb, which is the proposition and so on, then we are going to form a word frequency table. Uh where we are going to check these words are present how many times in a particular document. If I am going to have multiple documents, I am going to check whether this particular word is present for how many times in each and every document, that is called term frequency document. And finally, we are going to summarize about that particular content or paragraph which is given by the user in a very short amount. So what are the applications of text summarization is, first one is news aggregation, summarizing the news articles from multiple sources. Where I am going to get articles from multiple sources about a particular topic and then I want a summarization about all these things. So it is going to aggregate it and pick up the important topics or words from each and every articles and accordingly it is going to. Give you a summarize or give you a summarize the paragraph, summarize in the form of a paragraph, okay, so that the user can be able to. Easily understand about it instead of reading it from multiple sources, by using the summarization, I can be able to easily understand about that particular context or topic. Document analysis, condensing the lengthy reports or papers to a shorter format, email summarization for when the brief overview of the emails, if I have one thousands of emails, I can be able to. Read one thousands of emails at a time, so I can give it to the N L P model, that is where it is going to take summarization, where it is going to. Find out which is the most commonly used words, where as per the words which is being used, I am going to frame the sentences, the mission is going to frame the sentences, summarize it and review. What is the content of all these emails, a short description about it, and meeting summaries, generating the summaries of the meeting transcripts. And content summarization for the social media, creating the short summaries of longer articles for platforms like Twitter, okay, so I can. Give a summarization of the full content about about a particular topic in a short paragraph, okay. So next one is types of algorithms which is used in N L P, okay, so N L P algorithms compose a variety of techniques designed to process and analyze the human language. So these are the various algorithms which we are going to use, lemmatization, stemming, topic modeling, statistical language modeling, keyword extraction. T F I D F, term frequency, inverse document frequency, knowledge graphs, mission translation, word clouds, N E R, named entity recognition. Sentiment analysis, aspect mining, testing, text summarization, back of words, these are the very various techniques that we are going to use it to. Process, to understand the human language and analyze it, okay. First one is lemmatization instead, so lemmatization instead is the techniques which are used to reduce the words to the base and the root form, okay. So we need to, if I have a paragraph which is given to us, I don't want to process each and every word, which is unimportant to me, which is not going to be helpful for analyzing. In that case, I have to remove those words, this can be removed by using the process called lemmatization instead. So these are the words or techniques which are used to reduce them, words to the base or the root form, which helps in normalizing the text data, okay. So I am going to pick up only the important words from those sentences, okay, both are taking A to normalize the text data, okay. So lemmatization reduces the words to the dictionary form, for example, running, I am going to remove this I N G form. The base word color is a run, okay, so this is what we call as a lema, okay, what is a base word, root word for each and every word that I find it in the sentence. Stemming, limbs of the ends of the words, remove the suffixes, okay, it is mainly used to remove the suffixes, studies becomes study, okay, so. I take more time to process each and every character, instead I am going to remove all the affixes and find out what is the root word for it. So that it is going to help me or save me time or to remove all the redundant words in a particular paragraph or in a document, okay. So next one is topic modeling. Topic modeling is nothing but it is a method you start in the file, hidden themes or topics within a collection of documents, okay, so I am just going to. Give a keyword, based on the keyword, it is going to search in which context the particular keyword is present. And it is going to tell you about what is the intention of the particular paragraph in that document, okay, so it is used to identify the hidden themes. Or topics within a collection of documents, I may be having a multiple documents, okay, so what these documents say about, I am just going to. Process each and every word, I am going to find out how many words are present for how many times in these documents. Accordingly, I am going to say that this is going to be this document, these multiple documents mainly say about which type of topic, say for example, it is about N L P, it is about A I. It is about data science, it is about data analytics and so on, okay, so I am going to process it, I am going to find the frequency or count of words in each and every document, based on that I am going to. Say, this is what the particular document, these multiple documents are going to tell you, okay, this is what we call as a topic modeling, okay. And statistical language modeling is, it involves the prediction, the likelihood of a sequence of words, okay, and it helps in understanding the structure and probability of word sequences in a language. Okay, so here using some calculations, mathematical calculations, I am going to find out what is a word frequency. Uh in each and every sentences, in a paragraph, in a whole document and so on, based on, based on that, I am going to say that. This particular document is of highly important, this document is going to be ranked as first and another document can be ranked as two. Based upon the word frequencies which are present in each and every document, how many words are there and these words are present how many times in a document and so on. Okay, based on that, I can be able to decide whether this particular document is of high importance or not, okay. Keyword extraction, so it also identifies the most important words of phrases in a text, highlighting the main topics or concepts that is going to discuss, the same. I have to give some keywords based on that, it is going to compare that keyword which is present, which is with each and every word in the document. And I am going to find out how many times that keyword is present in the document, okay, T F I D F, this is also the same, okay. It is also a statistical measure used to evaluate the importance of a word in the document related to a collection of documents, okay. I may be having several documents, I am going to find how many terms are there, whether these terms are present for how many times, that is what we call as a term frequency. And inverse document frequency, I am going to find out how these words are going to be very, very important in the specific documents, okay. How the words are going to play a very important role in these documents, okay. And about the knowledge graphs, it represents the information through a network of entities and relationships, so here I see that each and every word can be tagged with the names or organizations, right. So same way here, I am going to create a relationship between the birds, okay, I am going to identify what is the relationship between the birds. Here the words can be called as entities and by that way can form a draw a map-like structure, okay, that is the graph-like structure. Where I say these words are related to each other and these documents, that is the words which are present in our documents are having a relevant information. So by this way, I can find out whether the sentences in a document are relevant to each other. If it is not relevant, I am going to remove all those sentences from the document by drawing a knowledge graph. This is what we call as a knowledge graph, so finding the relationship between the words in a sentence and sentences between another sentence. Next one is machine translation, it automatically converts the text from one language to another, okay, enabling the communication of words, language factor. I can convert from language to Hindi, English to Hindi, then Hindi to Tamil and so on, from one language it can translate to another language. This we call it as a machine translation and word clouds are visual representees of the text data with the size of each and every word. Indicates its frequency and importance in the text, okay, so I try to pictureize in the form of a graph or a tree format where I see that. These are the words which are present in this document, that these words are going to be of high importance, so I can place it at the top level. Those words which are going to have a lesser importance can be placed at the lower level, okay. And next one is named entity recognition, it is nothing but it identifies and classifies the key entities in a text into predefined categories such as names of the people, organizations, locations and. Already we have discussed about it, I hope it is clear. Next one is sentiment analysis also, it is going to determine the sentiment or emotions which are expressed in a text, okay. Finally measuring what is the type of sentence which is of positive or negative or neutral. Next one is aspect mining, aspect means here it refers to the features, okay, so it identifies the specific aspects of features mentioned in a text. And the sentiment associated with each and every aspect of feature, this is often used in product reviews to understand the customer opinions on different features, okay. So I talk about product color, I talk about product size, I talk about product weight, these are the different features. So I try to get the customer feedback and accordingly, I try to find out what the customers feels about the product weight. What the customers feels about the product size, what the customers feel about the product colors, which is being introduced newly, okay. So likewise, I can be able to collect all the customers' feedback and finally come to a conclusion whether it is of positive or negative or negative or neutral, okay. This we call it as a aspect mining, okay, text summarization, it generates a concise summary of a longer text capturing the main points and essential information. As we had discussed before, given a very long paragraph containing a document containing five to six paragraphs. Or multiple pages, I can be able to summarize those paragraphs into a very shorter version that we call as a text summarization. Next one is a bag of words, is a method for representing the text data where each and every word is treated as an independent document, okay. So it is going to, where the sentence is being defined in various words, okay, where each and every word I call it as a document. The text is converting to a vector of word frequencies, including the grammar and word mother, I am going to find out how many words are present. In a document and these words are present for how many times that is what the category, the word frequencies, okay. This we call it as a word bag of words and tokenization, it is a process of breaking down text into smaller units such as words or phrases or sentences. And that can be divided into various sentences, sentences into various words, okay, and that words can also be tagged with a corresponding. Part of speech, like whether it is a word or adjective or proposition and so on, okay, so it is a fundamental step in pre-processing text data for further analysis. Okay, so. So these are the various types of algorithms that can use it in N L P for industrial purpose also. Next one is what is a top N L P algorithm, so what is a very important algorithm that we will use it, okay. So the following are the most common N L P algorithms that machine learning specialized and data scientists work on, okay. First one is L D A, Nat, Bigichli, Allocation, this is one of the statistical. Algorithm, algorithm we can say, which is mainly is for topic modeling, here discuss about the topic modeling, right, okay, so that is one of the technique where it is going to. Um talk about a particular topic, so when you want to search multiple documents about a particular topic. It is going to tell you clearly whether the topics has been covered in the documents or not and what is the rank of each and every document based upon that particular topic, okay. So it helps to identify and underlying the topics in a collection of documents by assuming each and every documents is a mixture of topics and each and every topic is a mixture of words, okay. So topic with respect to which content, context it has been explained, that is also very important. We say apple, it may be a root or it may be about a mobile phone, so what is the context in which a particular word is being explained, okay. So the topic when I give it, it has to understand it and accordingly it has to summarize and it has to rank the document accordingly, okay. L D A is a probability distribution to topics for each and every documents and the words, so it uses a probability distribution technique, that is what we call as a statistical model. Use this one type of probability distribution method to identify. How many topics are there in the document and how many words are there related to a particular document and so on, okay. For each and every topic, it discovers the themes and the grouping of similar documents and this algorithm is particularly helpful or useful for organizing the large sets of unstructured text data. And enhancing the information record, so I want to find how many documents are there with respect to a particular topic, I can go for this algorithm, that is L D A algorithm, okay. Next one is conditional random field, C R F, it is also a probabilistic model used for structured prediction task in N L P such as entity recognition and part of speech tagging. Okay, so mainly for these two tasks, we use this algorithm, okay, so entity recognition is, we are going to identify the words where these words. Uh what is the relationship between one entity word with another entity word, okay, and part of speech tagging. So tagging whether it is a name or whether it is organization, whether it is a location and so on. And this model is a conditional probability of sequence of labels given a sequence of input features capturing the contacts and dependencies between the labels when a sentence is being given. I am just going to find out what is the relationship between each and every word in a particular sentence, okay, by creating, by finding what is the relationship between these words. Uh in a sentence, how many words are going to talk about the location, how many words are going to talk about the name of the organization and so on. Between two or more sentences also, I can be able to find out what is the relationship between them, whether it is all relevant to a particular topic and so on, okay. And next one is Porter stemmer, this is an algorithm used for stemming for purpose which reduces words to the root form. It is developed by Martin Porter, so this name comes Porter stemmer, this algorithm applies a series of rules to remove the common morphological inflectional endings. From the words in English, for example, running, I can reduce it to run, okay, so I am going to remove the affixes to form a root word, which is called as a run here, okay. Another one is, another algorithm is H M M, Hidden Marker Model. It is a statistical model, it is used to represent the systems that are assumed to be marker process with the hidden states. So mainly it is mainly used for part of speech tagging and speech recognition. It means I'm going to identify each and every word meaning and I'm going to associate each and every word with a tag called as a name, location, organization, money and so on. And accordingly, I'm going to understand the meaning of the full sentence and appropriately give a reply. Okay, so this H M M is going to be the algorithm which is going to mainly perform this task, part of speech tagging and speech recognition. Next one is a text tanker. It is an algorithm which is inspired by the Google page rank used for the keyword extraction and text summarization. Either can go for text keyword extraction and text summarization. I will be giving a keywords in a Google search engine. So what happens? It is going to search all the documents which are relevant to the keywords and appropriately and rank the documents based upon the number of times that particular keyword is present in these documents. Another one is, it can also be used for summarization also. Okay, once multiple documents are being given, I want to summarize, I want to know about what these documents tell you about. So that can also be done using this text summarization. So it builds a graph of words or sentences with edges representing the relationship between them such as co-words. I'm going to find out whether each and every word which are there in the sentence is related to each other by drawing an edge between these nodes. Each and every word is going to be like a node and if they are two words are related to each other, it has a. If it is interrelated with each other, then I draw an edge between these two nodes or between these two words. By applying a ranking algorithm, text rank identifies the most important words and sentences based on a certain centrality diagram. So how many times the particular word is going to occur in a document based on that, I'm going to rank the document. And it also helps in extracting the key phrases or summarizing the main points of a text, making it useful for the information retrieval and content summarization text. So I can also, from the multiple documents, I can also identify which word is repeated more often. So based on that, I can say that these words are the key points in that particular document. So I'm going to process each and every document and identify these key points. See, for example, I'm going to say if I have a word which is repeated for more than five, then those words are considered as a key point. Likewise, in a document, I can be able to find out how many keywords are there and in multiple documents, same way I can find out. And based on that, I can say that these documents are related to each other based upon the keywords that I'm going to fetch it from these documents. And next one is a Naive Bayesian. Naive Bayesian is a probabilistic classifier, classification algorithm. It is based on Bayes theorem assuming interdependence, independence between the features. So I'm going to have a paragraph, in the paragraph I may be having multiple sentences. Same way, I'm going to find out what is the meaning of these sentences. Based upon the meaning of these sentences, I'm just going to find whether it is related with each other or not. Okay, so here it is commonly used in text classification tasks, it's a spam deduction and symptom analysis. I'm going to detect what is the emotional tone of the particular sentence, what is the customer feedback. So what is the customer review? So whether it is positive, whether it is negative, whether it is a neutral, based upon the emotional tone. It's I call it as a positive word or a negative word. I have to measure the word. So certain words will be considered as a positive in the dictionary, okay? And consider words, some words will be measured as a negative. So all these will be available in the dictionary. I'm going to compare whether the new sentence which is having a set of words, whether these words belong to a positive or negative, based on that I'm going to decide it. Whether how many positive words are there, how many negative words, based on that I'm going to decide. And spam deduction also. So I can say that, say for example, I'm going to have a get an, receive an email. Wait, I don't know whether it is relevant to me or not. If it is relevant to me, definitely, I, it would be relevant to a particular topic. Say for example, about a particular company, task and so on. If it is not relevant to a company task, I say that this is called as a spam, which is not at all relevant to that, to my task which is given to me in the office. So likewise, I can categorize whether the email text is going to be considered as a spam or a ham. Support vector machines, it is also going to be helpful for classification or regression task. Classification, you know that I'm going to classify the tax whether it is good or bad or whether it is spam or ham and so on. And next one is a regression. I'm going to find the relationship between the each and every word in the sentence. So this is your regression. So in N L P, S V M's are often used for text classifications, this is categorizing the documents or identifying the sentiment. Okay, where it is possible that you are neutral. Next one is maximum entropy. It is also known as logistic regression for the classification tasks which are used to predict the probability distribution of a set of outcomes. So logistic regression, what is this? If I want the output to be zeros or ones, true or false, in that case I can go for the logistic regression. So I want to find whether this particular sentence which is of later to me or not, okay, related to my company or not. Then in that case, if it is related, then it is going to be written as true, else it's going to be written as false. So maximum entropy is a measure that I can use it to find out whether the sentence which is related, relevant to my topic or not. If it is relevant, it is going to give me as one, otherwise it is going to give me as zero. So max ent is applied to the task like part of speech stacking, named entity recognition and so on. And next one is a R N N. It is a class of neural networks which is designed for sequence data, so sequential data processing. In that case, you can use, go for this algorithm, making them ideal for it. N L P tasks such as in temporal definition, say for example, I want to temporal, the sincere time. Okay, so say with respect to a time, if something, if the sentences are framed, then in that case I can go for it. Okay, such as language modeling and machine translation, converting from language to another language. Okay, and language modeling. I want to find out what is the relevancy in that particular document. In that case, I can go for this R N N. Convolutional neural networks, it is mainly used for image processing, but it has been adapted from N L P tasks such as sentence classification and text categorization. So once I talk about the image processing, even though the image has been given, I have to transform it into the text. Then only I can undergo this text classification or sentence classification or text categorization. It uses many layers called as convolution layers to capture the local features in the data, making them affecting, identifying what is a pattern in that particular data. So how often this particular occurs? Okay, so based on the review, I can able to identify what is the pattern, whether the customer, meaning multiple customers likes about a particular product, whether multiple customers dislike about a particular product and so on. And L S T M, long short term memory network. It has a memory cell that can maintain the information over a long periods with the input output in forget case, that can regulate the flow of the information. So it is mainly used for many complex N L P task like machine translation, converting from one language, natural language to another language, natural language. Texture generation, speech recognition where context over extended sequences are pushed. Okay, so where it is mainly used for a complex type of task in N L P. So where it is not very easy to convert from one language to another language. During conversion, the meaning should not change. I have to ensure that. So for that purpose, I can go for this long short term memory network. Next one is a transformer network. Some mainly it is used to process the sequential data without relying on recurrence. Okay, so like say for example, self-attention mechanism to weigh the importance of different words in a sentence related to each other. So I'm giving some weight to each and every word in the sentence based upon the number of words, number of times a particular word is gone from. And transformers have revolutionized in N L P particularly task like machine translation, text summarization and language model. These three tasks, I can use this transformer network. Next one, this word to vector, it's a setup algorithm used to produce word evidence which are dense vector representation of words. So I can, I'm going to find the relationship between the words, what is the relationship from one, between one word with the other word. So I can form a table where I can find out what is the relationship between this using a word to vector algorithm. This uses neural network to learn the word association from a larger text to card from through the models like continuous back of words and skip. These are the various methods I can use it to find out the word association. And this representation allows for improved, improved performance in the tasks such as word similarity in clustering as and as input features for more complex N L P models. The words and I'm going to find out how many words, similar words are present in each and every document. For that purpose, I can use it and clustering also. I'm going to categorize these documents based upon the number of word frequencies. So based upon that, I can find out this document is going to talk more about these particular topic, okay? And I'm going to cluster, classify or cluster the document accordingly. Next one is logistic regression. It's also a statistical model used for binary classification task. And in N L P, it is employed for the task like test classification and sentiment analysis. So logistic regression, as I told you before, it is going to be of zero or one only. So mainly it can be used for binary classification, yes or no. Whether the document is relevant to a particular keyword or not. If it is more relevant, it is going to return a yes, else it is not. Decision tree is a type of model used for both the classification and regression task. A decision tree is a data and subsets based on the value that input which is creating a tree like model like decision. So you know about a decision tree where it has modes and edges. Okay, so where I'm going to keep on, I want to take a decision based upon the features. So if my age is less than twenty-five, then I declare the person as a very young, okay, or an adult. If it is going to be greater than equal to sixty-five, I declare that person as a senior person or a senior citizen. So I have to take a decision whether the person belongs to an adult or whether the person is a middle age, whether the person is a young age or whether it is a senior citizen and so on. For that, I need to have some feature. So for that, I'll be using a feature to take a decision. This is what we call as a decision tree. Okay, so each and in a tree, each and every node represents a feature based upon the particular feature value. I keep on moving from the top to the bottom and finally the leaf nodes will contain the decision. The base of that, tracking from the root node to the leaf node, I, that particular decision can be taken. So each node represents a feature and each and every branch represents a decision tree. Each and every leaf represents a, that is a final decision. So in N L P, they are often used for text classification. I can easily classify the text based upon the features that I'm going to check it in a document. Random forest, it is an ensemble learning method that combines multiple decision trees to improve the classification and regression performance. If we want to have a more accuracy, then multiple decision trees can be combined together to form a very larger unit which you call it as a random forest. Okay, so based on multiple features, okay, or based on multiple features of multiple documents, I want to take a decision. In that case, I can go for the random forest. So this random forests are used for the tasks such as text classification, but the accuracy will be higher. Because different models can be used. This is what we call as a ensemble learning method. Different types of models, I can use it to take a decision. Okay, so in a decision tree, this is a single model. Here random forest, it is an ensemble method. It means multiple decision trees, models can be used, okay, to take a decision. Next one is a K N N, is a non-parametric algorithm used for classification and regression. It classifies a data point based upon the majority class among its K nearest members. In a feature space, it is very simple and intuitive regarding more training fees. So K nearest members, if I have a data point, I'm going to check, say for example, in the area, I just want to check how many members vote for a particular candidate. In that case, what happens is I'm going to find out the, what is the, who votes for which type of candidate. In that case, if a, if more number of customers or more number of people vote for a particular candidate, I say that this candidate is very close. This particular data point is very closer or this candidate will win. Okay, so for future predictions, I can use this K N N algorithm. So mainly it is used for document classification or sentiment analysis, sentiment analysis as I told you, voting. So I can easily find a predictor what will happen in the future, how many people vote for a particular candidate. So based upon the number of people which are closer will go, going to vote for a particular candidate. So see for example, if I have a data point, I'm going to find out within a particular boundary in a location, how many points are closer to a particular random. So if it is many points are closer to a particular random point, then I say that random point is going to win it. Okay, so number of people are here. Next one is gradient boosting. It's a n-ensemble learning method that builds the model sequentially and with each and every model correcting errors of the previous one. This algorithm combines a vehicle learners, typically decision trees to create a strong predictive model. So here we are going to have two types of learners, lazy learner and eager learner. So in the case of the lazy learners, usually we'll be using some rules. Okay, so only they'll be using those rules to take a decision. And eager learners is nothing but or we called it as a dynamic model. So where based upon the environment or context, it changes the decision, it keeps on changing the decision. Because as the environment changes, we keep on taking or changing the decisions. Those are called as eager learners or lazy learners. So decision tree is called as a vehicle learners, means what's tactic method to create a strong predictive model. And gradient boosting is used for the tasks such as text classification and ranking. So last one is key applications of N L P. This can be used in automated customer service. Automated customer service in the sense, it can handle the routing customer inquiries, offering of the human agents for complex issues. Even if the, say for example, one if it's going to be a very complex query, it involves the human intervention. Otherwise, the robot itself, the virtual assistant or the chatbot itself can be able to answer for the human queries. Last one, key applications of N L P in industry five point zero, automated customer services. Where we use the chatbot to give the responses to the humans, intelligent process automation where you can analyze unstructured mails or the text like emails and some types of documents where you can able to automate the tasks such as data entry, report generation and contract analysis. And next one is an advanced human machine collaboration where the human can work along with the robots or the machines. Leading to the better collaborations or to making the decision in an effective way. And next one is a predictive maintenance where I can analyze the sensor datas and text based reports to predict the potential equipment failures. And so that it can go for the proactive maintenance and reducing the, so that it can reduce the downtime also. And personalized training in the support, it can analyze the employee feedback and performance. So identify the training needs and provide the personalized learning experiences, give some suggestions to the users and data driven decision making. It can analyze larger volumes of text data from various sources to provide insights and can, so that it can take the better decisions in the human, in the businesses. So, so we have come to the. So we have come to the final. The end of the session. So now I'm just going to release the Google form where it has a quiz so that you can able to attend the quiz. Uh, so that you can able to find out what type of knowledge you have got from this session. Okay, I will kindly share the Google form and please you attend all the quiz questions. Okay, let me find out who is attending or who is scoring the most. I shall post the quiz link. In the chat. Please attend the question. you can attend the question till twelve fifteen please submit it before twelve fifteen and if you have any queries you can ask
ladies and gentlemen you have come to the country session valley of day four we extend a lot of heartfelt thanks to honor chief guest P S Vina M A T H D Professor of Department C S D S S R M S science and technology Ramagaram we also wish to thank all the participants for the active involvement and financial support through the session with that we continue the session nine of day four you look forward to your participation in the upcoming sessions we will give great great break and join the next session twenty forty three